Uh, do you have any public comment? I don't see any members of the vote public, so we don't have many response. Uh, next item is approval of the minutes from the April meeting. Uh, and they're fine with me, good with Ann. Uh, what about Sean and Karen? Yeah, let's say they approve. People over here approve them. Um, okay, and now we have the review of summer twenty twenty-three independent audit assumptions and procedure.
Okay, terrific. Well, thank you for a few minutes this afternoon. Um, I know that you have some documents that you received. I'm gonna talk a little bit from the very last item that's on your list. It's the, um, Ithaca City School District two thousand twenty-three communication letter. Um, this is kind of a standard letter that we provide um, to the board and to the committee in advance of the audit. So that you have, you know, some information about about the audit process ahead of time. And I just want to get a few of the highlights of that for you. So, um, on the first page of that letter, there's information about communication. Um, you know, one of the most important aspects of the audit is communication between the auditors and the committee. Um, you know, we want to make sure that we have a good, um, two-way relationship, um, that we communicate, you know, information back and forth. If any members of the committee have concerns about the audit process or anything that they want to let us know, you know, um, one-on-one, I'm certainly available. Um, happy to take any of those conversations if there is anything like that. Uh, we communicate with the members of the committee um, here this evening as well as during the audit process. Uh, at some point during the audit, you'll receive email communication from us. Um, asking, asking some questions of you if you have any information, have any knowledge of, um, you know, non-compliance or anything in the, in the realm of fraud or anything like that that you need to let us know about, that gives you the opportunity to respond directly to us uh, without going through management of the district. Um, you know, so that we can make sure that we have that open, uh, open communication. Obviously, we're required to be independent of the district. There are some specific responsibilities um, under government auditing standards and the government, uh, government accountability office. So there's some information on the second page of that communication. Um, some specific things that we need to make sure that we, you know, make sure that we keep, um, independent in thought as well as, you know, during the audit process. The district should let us know if there are any changes in, um, directors, officers, anything of that nature, so that we can make sure that we, uh, keep independence, uh, during that process. You know, if there is any additional non-audit services, we need to make sure that we keep those services independent of the audit uh, and make sure that, um, that we don't impair independence during that process. So, um, we have done some of the audit planning, um, already. The district, we've done some internally, some, um, conversations within our own staff about, um, using previous audits, um, aspects, things that we need to be aware of during the audit. Uh, information about, uh, the federal awards that the district has and spends so that we know from a single audit perspective, uh, what federal programs we're going to be looking at, uh, when we're doing the audit. Uh, we have already done some of the work onsite with respect to, um, extracurricular activity funds. Um, some of the district buildings. Uh, and we've done some of that testing already, and we're continuing to do that testing. You know, before the end of the school year, while students are still on campus, while advisors and uh, central treasurers are still on campus, so that we can get some of that, some of that information done. We always consider materiality when we're planning and conducting the audit. So, you know, there are certain, um, certain errors that we might find, uh, that we probably won't bring to your attention if they, if they are very, very small amounts, if they're not, uh, of a material nature, not something that would affect uh, the financial statements in a significant way, um, you know. But the, the concept of materiality is not just quantitative, it's also qualitative. Um, you know, so there are certain aspects, uh, where even though there, there is something that might, from a dollar perspective, not be material because of the type of transaction or the, you know, way it's perceived, if you will, uh, some of those things we might still bring to your attention, even though quantitatively they might not be material. Uh, there are some, um, there are always significant risks of materialistic statement, things that just by their nature are considered significant. There is a table that's on page four of that communication letter that outlines some of those significant risks. Um, as well as a description of the risk and our response to it. So, um, you know, we will conduct those planned responses, inquire of personnel, um, review control procedures related to the potential for management override of controls. Um, examine samples of, um, of revenue transactions to make sure that revenue is recorded, especially recorded in the proper year. Transactions that occur close to year end, make sure that the, that the cutoff is appropriate, if those transactions are recorded properly. There are a lot of actuarial estimates related to the pension system, uh, related to, um, other post-employment benefits. We evaluate the underlying assumptions as part of the audit process. Uh, make sure that the, um, if those assumptions are appropriate, make sure that the, uh, recording of those estimates and the obligations are, is, um, proper. Um, we are, uh, we're scheduled to be onsite, uh, the last two weeks of August, starting August, when we first. And, um, we expect to be completed in advance of the October fifteenth deadline.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, I will mention, you know, you also received, just as a refresher, last year's audit documents. Um, as part of this year's audit, um, we're going to be looking at the comments that were made last year um, as part of the overall audit, um, but also to make sure that if there was, um, um, action taken on the part of the district to try to resolve those comments, we'll make sure that we have a good thorough understanding and that any of those comments that can be resolved will update, you know, our documents, um, and update our comment letters to show, uh, that resolving action was taken. Um, so, um, so those things that were commented on last year, you will see an update, uh, as part of this year's audit. Um, so those are the highlights that I had. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions?
I think it sounds super straightforward.
Yeah.
It, yeah, it is pretty straightforward.
I, Moira, if it's okay with you, um, I just, I do want to honor, um, a colleague and a district friend who will not be part of the audit process this year, who has been with us um, since I was at Bosie's, I knew her, and then, um, she was our auditor here with Insarow, um, Mimi, um, the Susan, who I'm sure all of you remember, she passed away on June fifth. Um, and so we had the honor of being able to attend the side of the table here and um, her services and heard some beautiful words, um, by her family and her colleagues. And, um, I do want to note that she was an Ithaca High School graduate. Very proud Ithaca High School graduate, in the class of nineteen seventy-four. Um, went on to, uh, be a Dean's List student at Cornell. Um, received her master's degree in accounting from Binghamton University and, um, was a licensed CPA. And so she will be greatly missed. Many of us shared stories about how she taught us when we were starting and her, um, her attention to detail, but her kindness about sort of what she discovered and getting the explanations and then working through and educating us um, on how to, you know, do fixes or how we could better, um, you know, uh, code things. I mean, I just, I can't tell you how much we relied on her knowledge. Um, she really is just such a fantastic person and she will be missed. So I just wanted to mention that, that that is a loss for the, uh, not just the audit process in our community.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you, Amanda.
Yeah, of course.
So what's next is, uh, potential areas of focus for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four internal audit?
So this is the time where I think it's really always a, the kind of a fun dialogue, because we get to sort of think about, um, you know, what, what is it that we want to learn more about? What is it that we want to, um, maybe do a deeper dive on? Um, so things in the past that we have done, right? We've done athletics and, um, everything from their inventory to their timesheets. We've done technology, um, we have done at the charter school. Uh, we have done extra class, which is what we're in right now. Um, I think we dabbled a little bit in, um, some of the contractual language and, uh, retirement benefits, uh, time sheet analysis, the transportation. So those are, I think, off the top of my head. I don't know, I'm looking up to Bob, he's usually lives for these with me. I think those were the ones that we've had in the past six years. Um, and so, you know, we can, we really, this is our time to sort of determine what the board specifically would like to be able to, um, have an analysis of, right? And then be able to come up with, um, if there are findings, right? What, what we can do about that and that allows us to create an action plan for those. I mean, I'm, I'm really positive about audits. I actually think they're fantastic, um, because it's, it's someone else's eyes sort of looking into systems approaches and procedures, um, that for improvement. So, um, I, you know, I want to open the floor, really, I, we, you know, to think about what, what you would like to see.
Well, I actually have a question, though. What, what do you, like, from your perspective, what would be really constructive?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at my colleagues. I mean, is there anything that pops in your mind of sort of over the course of time that we've been meeting, that we say, wow, that would be really great to kind of have someone take a look at?
It's getting late. Um, I was gonna look at this under a different umbrella with you, Amanda, in terms of our health insurance and whether there's anything to audit there in terms of just checks and balances with. I know that, I believe that EMV does some auditing, but
Right.
See if they're accurate, that type of thing.
That's, that's great. We're, I mean, we're always thinking about preparations for negotiations. So is there any elements of the bargain agreements that maybe we would want to do an analysis of, right? I don't know if it's a professional development or, um, utilization of substitutes for, I don't know, assessments or things like that. I know, I'm, I'm just wondering, um, and I'm using that just as an example.
I also would add, if we may not want to make a decision right now, I put that in there as a discussion item, but sometimes things will come up during the audit that then help us make a decision on what to focus on. Um, you know, last year's audit sort of brought to light some things we wanted to look more closely at with extra class. So, you know, if we don't decide today, we can certainly continue thinking about it and see if anything comes out of the audit.
It's great. That makes a lot of sense.
Uh-huh.
Wayne, are you hearing any trends or things that people are focusing on in the district you're working with?
Not, not really, no. I mean, you know, every every district kind of does their own thing when, when it comes to internal auditing, I think, generally speaking. And so there isn't a shift in any particular one direction.
Great. So I guess this is a think about it, and maybe we all come back with one or two, um, spots and maybe we can and one, does that one take place, the internal? Well, it, it, it should have been wrapped up by now, um, for the one that we're doing on extra class. So this is the one, remember, where I think there was, unfortunately, I think there was a leave of absence and so it kind of delayed us. So we should by now have had that in, um, that it goes, it usually follows after, like, the winter, uh, during the winter time.
I did double-check with our internal auditors and they, they said that it was okay for their work to wrap up over the summer. Um, but typically we would have had an internal audit report, you know, around this time. So, you know, that's, I think they're probably going to be wrapping up in August and then get a presentation from them in September-ish, so.
Time, time to think. I mean, I, I mean, from, I'm not on the, uh, board anymore, but, um, you know, I am curious about health insurance and how that, and, and, and just how, you know, did, did it pan out the way it was anticipated, you know? Because there was the concept at the time that it was going to be, you know, make things more affordable. It was going to change, you know, how much you owed in the future. It was going to give everybody the same, you know, in, insurance and it'd be more reliable. And there's like a lot, there were a lot of compelling reasons to do it. So I guess, I'm curious whether or not that, you know, with, you know, in, you know, looking at it in the long term, it's like, oh, you know, did that, did that work out? How did that go? And I don't know if that's an audit. I mean, I guess that would be an audit thing.
So we, we've done the cost savings analysis, because it's, it's actually not that difficult to do.
Oh, interesting.
Because you can actually look at what the premium rates were at the consortium, had we stayed with our plans.
Interesting.
And track those percentage increases. And then you can actually track what our claims costs were, because now, remember, we're claims-based, we collect premium. The district pays all the claims.
So that's interesting. So you can already do that not in audit.
We can do that. So the savings calculation, and we've done that in finance committee last year, I think. We, we might want to wait until all this Hartford stuff shakes out and then do instead of spending the time now to do it, knowing that it's going to be changing here, uh, maybe like in the spring.
Mm-hmm. Do that now. Now, I have a question for clarification. It was my understanding that back in December, uh, we decided two things related to health insurance, that we were going to survey the retirees related to retiree health, that we were going to survey the retirees and that we were going to have someone do an audit that I understood included a cost analysis. And I believe in terms of the, the survey, we got some, some, some information. Uh, it took a very long time, uh, and that was, you know, a while ago. And I was always anticipating that we'd have a report about that. And then when I asked about my understanding of, of an audit related to health insurance, um, the answer I got was that EMV was doing it, um, which hadn't been my understanding when we talked about it. And that they were finding it very, very difficult to get the information about, about denials and, and that kind of thing, so. I'm confused.
Uh, you, you are correct. The, um, the, uh, retiree survey is done. I think superintendent mentioned that and he's preparing, we're preparing to do a presentation at that, at an appropriate time. Um, and it came back actually pretty positive in terms of if you begin to read into the questions and what it, what it showed us is what we sort of anticipated, which was a lot of folks had heard a lot of bad things, but their personal experiences were not, uh, were not supportive of of it being a bad experience. Anyways, um, the audit itself from EMV, what they are finding is that the companies are saying, look, we are audited by state agencies. We are not opening our books up to any other private entities, which they consider us to be. We have an obligation under the law to be aud, uh, audited by this. We do that, and that's as far as we're I think that we've reached, uh, a dead end on that one.
So then what would an audit by the district, you know, in a, in a district concept be? If that's their experience there and they're already getting audited, I mean, what?
I was thinking of, and I think this is what EMV does, is they take some large claims and they actually see whether or not the services that were, um, that were indicated by the physician or the hospital were actually conducted. Right? I mean, I, I had in a hospital experience a little while ago and it came back and, you know, I'm fairly well-read, uh, but I had to figure out, is this exactly what they did to me when I was in there for, uh, three hours? There's a lot on there. So you can well imagine if someone's in the hospital for a week and the list of services they received is longer than your arm. Are all of those, uh, or some of them correct or some of them purposely incorrect? I don't know. That's, that's what an audit's for. So that's the, that, that's the line I was thinking of taking. Now, the other audit you might be thinking of too, Moira, is whether or not we actually, you know, quote, saved money by switching.
Right.
And I, I think Amanda and I are convinced we have, we have, we don't need an audit to show that, we just need our numbers. But to the extent of whether or not it was as successful as we had originally anticipated, that's something we can look into as well.
Well, you already, you essentially do, and Dwayne, I don't know if you maybe would be willing to speak to what Armory Associates does for us in terms of, um, the post-ben, you know, the post-retirement cost. There is actually a full report from them that gets fed into our financial audit.
Yes, correct.
That, um, showed the year that we changed. I remember speaking about that quite in depth at the audit committee of overall, the, I, I don't want to overspeak, but it was like substantially millions of dollars.
Yes, it was.
From a future.
Correct.
Of, of, right, of liability of
Right.
For the district.
Right.
So that's already audited by actuaries.
Yeah, so I'm wondering, I mean, if, if it wasn't the, if it wasn't the health insurance, what, what maybe I'd be curious what other things you were thinking, because I'm just wondering in terms of the audit, it's like from this financial perspective, that's a different question than what Bob was talking about, whether or not the, you know, if, if they said they x-rayed you for, you know, a broken leg. I mean, would you even be able to do that? I mean, I don't know.
It seems like outside, actually. Like West Star, I don't know if they would be the group to do.
Yeah.
Right.
Seems or that, but if we wanted to do that, we would, we could find, yeah, you know, a group.
I think, I think that would, I don't think that they would have, um, again, access or rights to that kind of information.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's not, that's less a financial, or maybe it is, I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, sometimes it's not necessarily, I don't know, I'm new to this audit stuff. And, um, but certainly a financial question is what do we know now that X number of people have opted to go back to the Hartford or go to the Hartford? Some of them were never on it, but, um, about what that is costing the district.
Sure.
Starting on July, July one, we know that. Now Emily is suggesting there are things that we won't know for a while. And I'm interested in such answers.
Until January first, uh, when we see this second wave.
October fifteenth.
Right, I'm in.
Right.
Or whatever we come up with now is going to be outdated.
Right, okay.
Tracking, tracking both the Hartford and Aetna is actually, again, a relatively easy task because it's, it's a fully insured product, right? So the premium is the cost. And so you can actually do very easy comparative between those two. So, you know, when, when Emily and I, Emily inherited my ugly spreadsheets, but they were right, they were by tab, and it was like, um, retirees pre this date because they had zero, um, cost share, right? And there's still a, a significant number of retirees that don't pay anything. The district pays a hundred percent of that premium and they pay zero. Then the next wave of retirees, based on when they retired, pay ten or eleven percent and the district pays the remaining ninety or eighty-nine. And so those are really easy spreadsheets. I mean, obviously, there, there are moment in time study, because the next month, if, you know, unfortunately, something were to happen to someone or a spouse, that you, you might be off by four or five. But the reality is, right, I think.
By something happening, you mean dying?
Yeah, so. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great. I, I love that.
Uh, Sean?
We still have to figure out this technology. I hope you all can hear me.
Yeah.
Yes.
Fantastic. So my quick comment is not about health insurance, so should I wait until that gets completed?
Um, no, go ahead. Throw it out.
Fantastic. Um, I greatly appreciate Sydney's recommendation to wait and, um, we certainly should do that. Uh, but when the question was asked, I had two programs that I was thinking about that I'd just like to throw out there and we can discuss later. One would be, um, our music and fine arts program. I know we've done a bunch of things that are related to co-curricular, but that would be one that I'd be interested in and maybe it's already been discussed. Um, and then the second one, and I don't even know how to frame this or think about it and know that we're in significant transition. So for me, it'd be more of a baseline than an audit. But I'm interested in what, um, sick time has been over the past little bit or sick days. Have you ever done an audit like that or I don't even know what's, what's potential? But those were the two things. And again, I appreciate Sydney saying that maybe we should wait as well.
Those are great ideas, Sean. Thank you.
Thank you. So, yeah, it makes sense in terms of going, just going back to looking at our cost for retirees to wait to, and I, I was saying, you know, so when you say something might happen to someone that would throw things off a little bit, you're talking about somebody dying and going off the plan.
Um, yeah, right. So that, you know, again, it shifts a couple people here and there. And then obviously then the other wave, right, is the Blue Cross Blue Shield. The minute you get into the, the pre-sixty-five retirees and actives, that is, that is, we can track premium and then you have to look at year-end costs, including the IBNRs, because that, that usually has a little lag, right? The incurred.
So the pre-sixty-five, pre-Medicare are still on the
All on Blue Cross Blue Shield. So you can be a retiree that's pre-sixty-five or an active, any age. And then if you opt into the health insurance, depending, you would, you would be paying either twenty percent or twenty-two percent of the premium. But remember that the district then makes the claims whole, right? So there, we've been doing analysis a lot about our premiums not keeping up with the language of the contract and the claims cost. We actually are, the employees are very favorable in this equation. They actually, if you were to, if you were to say that the premiums should represent the claims, right? Our, our premiums are very low as employees. And so it's not aligned with
Well, that's an interesting
If, if we were to equate premium with claims, total claims.
Right.
So we've been in dialogue, Bob and I, with, um, you know, union leadership around, how might we do this? We've been talking internally about how, how we would do that right now, and we're just leaving it be, because we are in line with the premiums. The premiums are, right, and people pay twenty-two or twenty percent. But if we, when or how do we actually look at the premiums as relatable to the claims, the total claims cost? And if we were to do that, we, we, right, what's the mechanism?
Because otherwise, we're losing money, right?
That's, well, the district is covering the costs.
The district is covering, I, what I mean is that, that it is, um, it's
So, yeah, it's a great question.
Yeah.
To, I mean, it's going to have to involve policy committee, it's going to have to involve finance and
On its self with that?
It, it could for sure, it could absolutely give us some, I mean, I mean, I guess it could. We can do the math too, like, it's really just good population of spreadsheets and then looking at how the year closes, right? And, um, you know, and then just seeing what, where, where, you know, that, that difference is. And then we have to create policies or procedures around, how do we treat that, right? And, and right now, the district is covering the cost. We have And, and right now the district is covering the cost. We have a, a nice fund balance as well. If it were to feel that it was too cumbersome for the general fund to cover. Um, and again, notice I'm not worried. I think we're in really fantastic shape. I'm really excited that it's favorable to the employee. That, that, especially during COVID and times of trouble right now, I think that's a really wonderful benefit. It's a fantastic benefit. And we're aligned, right, with the premiums, but are the premiums aligned with the total claims? That's the question.
EMV can help with that.
Oh, absolutely.
Can look at that and do a premium study.
Absolutely. So EMV, we might even already be paying for that. Um, Sydney made a note. Thank you for reminding me. We also have another audit coming up, just so that you are aware. We are on the list. For all of the ARP S gear. Uh, we are in the wave. Oh, it, it's, it, it cannot come soon enough and I'm so excited about it. Um, it will be October or October, November, um, is when they'll be on site and we are like. We are, uh, this, uh, it's actually Fed, the federal.
Okay.
Yeah, that, yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a significant audit. A few of our colleagues have gone through it in other districts, cause they chose the first wave to kind of be. Early on in the process. This will be quite large. We are a very large district and we have, um, lots of money coming our way. Um, we're very fortunate that Angela created terrific spreadsheets that we can then build from it. Sydney's been populating and we're, you know, aligning those with, um. Uh, FS tens, which are sort of the statements, the financial statements that you would submit to the government around how you would spend that money. And we're making sure that that all, like when you say you're gonna spend it this way, this is how you actually spend it. Um, there's a lot of expectations around, um, getting those reports and, and documentation up on the website and so. We will keep you posted in this committee on that audit, um, just so you are aware, but I. I, uh. I don't know if you can tell our, by tone, it's, it's not gonna be fun times. It's gonna be, that's gonna be a big project to do. So that will be our fall.
No, wow, okay.
Okay, yeah, great.
Okay, so. So where are we?
I think we're just looking at the next meeting. That'll be Dwayne, um, presenting the audited financials, the draft financials.
Right.
Um, October, late September.
It'll probably be most likely the first week of October.
Okay.
Is generally speaking where we have hit, um, the deadline for submission is October fifteenth. Um, so it'll be prior to that. Um, but it would be probably close to that. So, yeah, we usually hit first, second week of October. And as we get, as we get closer, we'll, we'll narrow down the, narrow down the date and.
Right.
Come up with the time that works.
Hopefully we're not also reviewing the internal audit report at that.
Okay.
Meeting, otherwise, so we may have one in September, just to do the internal audit report and then we'll do this one in October and. Sorry for that, um, you know, the burden of those, that meeting, you know, those meetings being so close. Um, we, we had a shift in our internal audit team and, and, you know, there was, there were some. Um, health concerns with one of them or a relative of one of them. We got a new, new people on the audit, so it's stretched a little bit longer, but we're still within. When the state wants us to, you know, report on our internal audit, so we're okay.
Anything else? Sean, Karen? Anybody else who's on the call?
Nope. Thank you very much.
All right.
Nothing from me. Thank you.
Thank you.
As just an exec team member and not a board member, I would just like to thank our business office staff. Emily, Sydney, Amanda, I mean, everyone who works in the office for just their incredible attention to detail. Their, their thoughtfulness, um, around quality assurance and ensuring we're really following all of the guidelines and really working collaboratively. With our internal and external auditors in ways that accept feedback. And see audits as opportunities. So big ups to our business office. Thank you.
Yes, thanks, yeah. And I particularly like to thank Emily for the incredible. Work and painstaking and, and, uh. Work that she did with the retiree health insurance. Thank you. Thank you so much. So I guess we're done. Let's, uh, call this to a close. Thank you. All right.
Thanks, Wayne.
Okay.
All right, earlier than last.